We'll open with the lowest prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. I keep them calm, thou who be done on all their exertions and pain. Give us rest, stay everybody, liberate, liberate, and forgive us our trespasses. That's the means we give you, those threats attacks against us. We need this light of temptation, but they deliver us from evil. The rising of the kingdom, our hope for every day, amen. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. To settle without looking for witches' stats. One nation, under God, indivisible, will liberate and judge us for all.
Okay. Now clerk, will you call the roll please?
Mr. St. Columbia?
Present.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Messina?
Present.
Mr. Ethely?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Maxine won't be with us this evening, so that's.
Just a minute, sir.
Dr. Miller's here, so we have five.
Hello, Doc.
So we do have a quorum and we can go ahead and get started to date. Um, so our first order of business was supposed to be the approval of minutes and that was inadvertently left out of the packet. So you won't find those inside the packet, the minutes from the previous meeting. We will cover those on the November fourth meeting. Just wanted to make that clear. The treasurer, Mr. Turner, is not here for the old business report for the financial update. But I will say briefly, um, over this last week, this is the first full week that I've been able to be in the office and um, we have some bleeding in different areas, whether that's bills that we can maybe trim down on. We've had some conversations with the phone companies about lines that might not be operative anymore. Existing lines that maybe can be, um, removed. And so the financial conversation between myself and the treasurer, Mr. Turner, has been pretty productive one. Ms. Ramsey and Chief Staff Valley and I have all sat down yesterday and talked to AT&T about some of our existing bills with them. So we are making an aggressive effort to try to resolve and make sure that we have less bleeding than the day before, so, yeah.
Could we, uh, was I said something about this at the last meeting? Uh, could we each month get a copy, uh, an up-to-date copy of our bills so we can watch that real close?
Yep, that's, so that's part of, I think that that should be something that all of you should be able to see, as well as the public too. People have questions and I definitely want everybody to understand where we are, kind of like a meter, a meter check between each meeting, what's going in, what's going out and what we paid, so definitely in favor for that. And I'll make sure that I speak with Mr. Turner about that. So, our first new order of business is the resolution authorizing signature on accounts. If you look at the first page of your packet, this is my first meeting with you all here and first meeting, official meeting as mayor. And so this resolution would allow me to have signing power on CD accounts as necessary for payroll, things of that nature.
Eleven. I move that the resolution number eleven, uh, be, uh, read the title only and the.
A resolution authorizing signatures for all banking purposes and for other related purposes. Thank you. Any discussion? Now clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Five, yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
We have, right on time. Our next order of business, the police chief, Chief Sanders, um, is going to approach to talk about an inattentive driving ordinance. This is a program that the police department is going through as, that will provide different types of training, ultimately allowing them to gain more equipment in the future. And, and I believe that this is a good, uh, program to support them through as we can supplement maybe some of the costs that we might not be readily able to pay and they can get those to this program. So I'll, I'll give him the floor to share a little bit about how this ordinance would work and also how the program itself will be, um, how they will participate in that program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this inattentive driving ordinance, it's an ordinance that that's going to help with our distracted driving and helping with what's happening. It's, uh, it's, it's for, it's for the enhancement of, of road safety uh, and to prevent accidents for useless and careless driving. It focuses on the accountability and the prevention part of, of the accidents and everything that we work on a daily basis here. I'm asking for this ordinance for the fines that we collect to go to the police department's equipment fund. Um, I'm sure you all have a copy of the ordinance if you want to read over it. I think it'll be a proactive measure towards our safer streets and it'll hold everyone accountable.
You don't have anything in your book, uh, to control any of this? As it stands now, you're, with law enforcement?
We, oh, we, we, we have the, the state.
State statute authorizes most of this.
Yeah.
Uh, many, the state statutes authorize also the city to adopt any statute as a local ordinance. And for many cities, what they have adopted is these inattentive driving ordinances to give a person a chance to keep it off their record versus being speeding and receiving the points on their record. And its collateral purpose is specifically designate the proceeds to go towards equipment funds, et cetera. And so you still would, they still would pay the state court costs and et cetera, uh, but the fine, the portion that would come to the city from this ordinance only will go strictly towards the police, uh, equipment fund. Yes, and so one of the requests he's made, uh, first day that, that, uh, mayor was sworn in, he received an email from the chief saying, hey, I need equipment. And so, uh, one of the things about it is, uh, due to the, to the pending debts, uh, this is a way to, to try to get some funding. It's, it won't be a whole lot, but it's some funding towards the police equipment that's paid for by violators of the law versus, uh, having the city having a budget and et cetera for it.
Yeah.
And so that's what, what the chief met with me about it. He said, can we do something similar? And he and I met several times about the ordinance and then we drafted the one that we have here.
But we can have a supplementary ordinance for the fund?
Yes. In, in a traffic law in the state of Arkansas, the city can pass that ordinance that, that's similar to it as a city ordinance.
And, and you approve it?
Yes, sir. I've, I've met with him two or three times about it. Yes, sir.
I believe it's in there.
Oh, is it?
I believe it is.
I believe it was not exceed two.
Not exceed two fifty.
To exceed two fifty.
What's that number or?
Nine.
Nine.
Number nine.
Two twenty-five?
Yes, thank you.
Which is much cheaper than a, than a state citation.
Yes, sir. I've talked to the chief as the, the city attorney mentioned. I think that this is a good idea. I personally, in my time around the city, I've seen a lot of inattentive driving for different reasons, cell phones, conversations. Um, and I think that we ought to make sure that we keep that message of expectations clear that we want, we want safe drivers, so.
We're also getting a, a fluctuation in, in bikers. Uh, we have numerous reports of just vehicles, the drivers not paying attention.
Yeah.
The almost accidents, the what ifs, let's prevent that.
Yeah.
Okay, you feel like this puts a piece into the action? I move that we, uh, uh, put ordinance number nine, uh, title, retitle only. Make a motion that we.
Suspend the rules. Leave the most suspended rules, uh, order number nine, twenty-five, place on third and final reading with, reading the timeline.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Now clerk, will you call?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Five, yes.
Order number nine, twenty-five, an ordinance to define and prohibit inattentive driving within the city limits of all the western Arkansas. To promote public safety and to designate the use of fines for police equipment and for other, uh, purposes. So needs to be a motion to adopt.
I move, so move. Now clerk.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Five, yes.
The emergency clause that we need to.
No, sir, it's effective within thirty days.
Second, seven. Okay.
And this, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, there was also a desire to talk about department body armor and duty.
Duty weapons, correct.
Weapons. This, this is not on your attentive driving ordinance, but since he's here, I figure it'd be good to have him explain this as well.
Uh, it's very simple. Body armor is outdated, duty weapons are old. It's not my officers, I used to use the wrong verb, it's our officers. I think we need to fully equip them with the proper things to go out here and do the job that we're asking them to do. Uh, I submitted quotes, I'm not sure if you guys have them right now. I can pass them around if I need.
That might be helpful, thank you. And being that this is the first time we're seeing these quotes, I think it could be a good idea to also make, um, or not have to rush to a judgment decision right now. This could be something that we could bring up in the November fourth meeting as well. Oh. Any, any questions or discussion for the chief about the body armor or, or, um, department duty weapons?
I mean, uh.
Uh, chief, you've had discussions with the council through email. Just for the, the publics, uh, that are watching sake, uh, what type of equipment are you looking to, for the city to consider purchasing instead of?
For the body armor, it would be Safe Life, um, it's, it's a high-grade body armor. Given what we're dealing with in the modern day, um, it's more expensive, but I asked, well, what, what is the cost of one of our officer's lives? So, and for the, for the duty weapons, we, we tend to go with the, the path that the FBI zones. Uh, everybody's blocks, the Model seventeen. That's where, that's what's on the, um, quote.
You got two quote here.
Yes, sir. One is for body armor and one is for duty weapons.
Nineteen thousand dollars?
For, for the body armor.
That's the, the one you're wanting to get?
Yes, sir. That's what I feel, safe with sending my officers to do the job we're asking them to do.
Be it.
That was for eighteen units, isn't it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen units?
Fifteen, yes, sir.
So, uh, you want us to approve the nineteen thousand dollar?
For the body armor.
Body.
And then there's another one in your, in your right hand.
Yeah.
That's about nine thousand, close to ten thousand for duty weapons.
Okay. Block, gun. See it, okay. So, okay, here. Oh, okay.
So I.
Funding of this, you got money in the, your budget to, and lead?
I don't, I don't currently.
I think that it's, I think that the severity and the, the need for these, this equipment could warrant, um, us looking at potentially the cops grant.
Oh, yeah.
So I definitely think that, uh, that's something that we could consider. And I know that this is the first time a lot of us are seeing these quotes. So if we need to move this to the November fourth meeting, I, I would like to at least have a vote by then. If we don't feel comfortable making a motion to.
Yeah, they need the, they need the equipment.
I agree.
How many men do you have that?
Currently, right now, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Correct.
So that would be a grand total of how much money?
For the body armor? It'd be that nineteen thousand, if you just looked at.
For all, sixteen?
So that was quote for fifteen. Currently, a lot of the officers went through that same vendor and bought their own.
Oh.
But some of us did not and we're still currently utilizing the expired body armor.
Okay. Trying to get a handle on how much money we're talking about, you know, the bottom line.
Bottom line for body armor is going to be that nineteen thousand. You have my copy, you, you may look at it, whatever that is.
That's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line.
For the body armor. Yeah.
There.
So you'd like a motion from us to approve this transaction?
I, I think, I think this police safety warrants it.
Yeah, I, I think they need to have it. Yeah, I, I'd make a motion that we endorse the suggestion and the movement of it, yeah.
I second it.
Yeah, we need it for our police officers.
There any extra discussion around purchasing new body armor and duty weapons for a police department?
We need to distinguish that that might possibly be, uh, reimbursed from the cops grant. They need to be just.
I don't think you can use the cops grant for equipment.
Okay, not.
No, the cops grant is to defer, is for you to bring in the officers.
Okay. Salary used to join, salary, like.
Right, for, for, yeah, it's reimbursement for salaries and, and what the difference that you bring in also, so.
Okay.
We've, we've had these conversations before, the cops grant is not for cars, equipment, bullets, or whatever.
It's for payroll.
It's for, it's for payroll, however, um, did, what did you have left in you, in your equipment fund?
Currently, right now, I have about eight thousand. I've been using it to furnish all equipment for my new officers.
Yeah. So he's got about eight thousand in his equipment fund, the rest would have to come from general funds.
Is it possible to set it up as a stipend?
I mean, I think if you just, Ms. Ramsey and Ms. Mr. Turner could probably, if they know it's coming, they could plan for it. I mean, and so, uh, you know, I don't know what the pressures are on them now, but I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, never been opposed to it, but it just, the cops grant is like not a source for.
Yeah, that's all right.
Question, the, the, uh, chief, how long would it take for the body armor to arrive? Is this specific it made or how long would it take?
So we hadn't, I hadn't did a bulk order before, but it generally takes about two weeks for the single orders that I saw officers did, I bought off the website also.
It had, actually had the equipment in two.
Yes. I'd also note that if we do use the rest of my funds out of the equipment fund that we use, I'll be right back in front of you asking for money to furnish the new officers that I'm still currently hiring.
We serve and need to protect our police officers.
I agree.
Absolutely. Okay. So I made the motion as we moved forward and went. Got a second?
I have a second. Thank you, Mr. Messina. Five, and clerk.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Five, yes.
Motion passes. Thank, thank you, chief.
Thank you all.
Thank you, chief.
Moving on to our next order of business, um, we have a grant, a garbage truck proposal. As many of you, all of you might know now, we've been struggling with the routine maintenance of a couple of our garbage trucks. And we do have a gentleman here from Arkansas Municipal Equipment, a different site um, from different, from the last meeting that wants to talk about their proposal. You can find this on page six in your packet, which would be, um, a quote for what that vehicle would be and as, as well a couple of diagrams of the rear end loader style that we would be potentially purchased. So if you, you're ready to come up, we, we can hear from you.
Thank y'all. I'm Ronnie with Arkansas Municipal Equipment. I've got some packets here, I'll pass out real quick to y'all.
Yeah, back load is not, obviously it won't have the arm on it.
No, sir, it doesn't have the arm on it.
I do think it's worth noting as well, just as we start to think about questions. I do think, given the history of what I've been able to find out over the last ten days, of what our service capacity is and maintenance capacity, the rear end loader seems to be the best fit for, for us right now and who's currently employed by the city and who's on our staff. If it won't require as much maintenance as, um, extra tru, or trucks to have more axles, side loaders or front loaders.
Thank y'all for having me here today. Um, give y'all a second there to kind of look over everything and check all the pictures out and stuff. Um, just kind of tell you a little bit about ourselves. Um, Daniel Ellison owns the company, it's a family-owned business. Um, he prides customer service. He looks for the customers to be completely happy. We have, we've got, I believe, the best service department in the state. Um, I've got plenty of references around you. Hughes just got a new truck, um, uh, Stuttgart, St. Francis County, Forest City, West Memphis, I'm delivering them one tomorrow. Uh, they've been on the buyback program, so I'm going to turn in one of theirs tomorrow. Um, Earl Park and you name it, I'm, I'm surrounding you. So I have plenty of references to, to back me up on what I say is we're number one in customer, customer service. Um, I've got this truck here, it's stacked with warranties. I don't know if it's more warranties than y'all are wanting to pay for, but this is what we see in long-term trucks, so we put it on here. Uh, the big one is that TC four warranty. Everybody knows we're dealing with rats and mice and everything else and they like to chew wires and they like to tear stuff up. So we like to put that warranty on there because it pays for itself for one trip, them trying to diagnose where the problem's at. Um, and you'll also have the towing warranty, you'll have a five-year transmission warranty also and a five-year engine and after-treatment warranty, which is worth every penny because I know everybody here probably knows about deaf systems and how expensive and how much of a pain they are. So that has all that covered on it. Um, only thing it don't cover is neglect, of course, you know. Um, on the body side, uh, you'll have two-year cylinder, two-year body warranty. Uh, during that time, if you have any, any problems with that, we have travel mechanics, I have five mechanics that travel the state. We come to you, you don't have to bring it to us, we'll service your bed here. Uh, while it's under warranty. After warranty, we can still do the same thing. We can come here, it'll be a, what we call a convenience fee.
You actually come down here to work on the truck?
Yes, sir.
We have problems.
On the body side, yes. Uh, anything chassis warranty, they have to go to the chassis dealer. I can't touch it or avoid the warranties. And we carry several lines, Peterbilt, International Freight Line, we can't be certified and everything, so we carry too many. Uh, we're out of Poen, Arkansas.
Where?
Poen, Arkansas.
How far is that from here?
Uh, it took me about two hours and forty minutes to get here. But anything like that, on that side, you don't have to come to us, we're going to come to you.
Okay.
So, um, with us being kind of south of Little Rock there, we're kind of centralized so we can usually get to everybody within a few hours. So we're kind of in a perfect location to get all over the state. Um, but like I said, anything chassis, of course, will have to go to your local chassis dealer, uh, probably be West Memphis, Memphis on this freightliner.
Is it, I have, uh, this Cobra truck, is it similar to what we're functioning with now, our trucks that we have presently?
It's going to be similar, uh, we have a bigger belly, so you can put more trash in it at a time. So when you're cycling, you're doing less cycle times, which makes it more efficient for the guys to do their job. They don't have to stop, cycle, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of dead time. So if you're going away from automated, going to rear load, that bigger belly is going to make a bigger difference because you can get more, more trash in there on your cycle times. Um, other than that, like I said, we don't have a lot of issues out of them. You're going to get a leaky cylinder from time to time. It's going to happen with equipment, all equipment, you know. Um, but that's going to be covered under warranty, no major issues there, so. And this, oh, sorry, and on this truck here, this truck is built on the ground in Boomville, Mississippi. We have our plant over here in Boomville, they do like our twenty yards or smaller automated stuff like that, which is not very far from y'all. Um, I can make it from my shop to there in about five hours to the factory. So, um, as soon as y'all make a decision and you want to purchase a truck and I don't know if you're financing or purchasing, I don't know the details, but, um, as soon as everything's approved, I'll get that truck rolling here, uh, to my shop. I'll get everything done, I'll get it PDI checked out, give me a couple of days and I'll have it to you. So it, it can move real fast, once I get the approvals. Um, I can't make it move until I know, you know, where the money's at or whatever, but.
What would be the turnaround time for, for, what would be the turnaround time for it actually getting here?
Um, from the time you give me green go, give me about a week. That'll get set up for track.
Actually have a truck here in one week?
Yes, sir, it's on the ground at Boomville, Mississippi.
Over, over Mississippi?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's already built and ready. Uh, we build stock units, so we have them and merge situations. Unfortunately, y'all had a wreck and need a truck quick, so that's why we build stock units. But we just let them sit at New Way to the Ready.
Who around here has these trucks? What other cities, you, you, you mentioned a while ago, what?
Hughes, Hughes just got one, uh, just a few weeks ago, well, sorry, a couple of months ago, Hughes. They ju, yeah, Hughes, Hughes just got one. Um, that was, that was a long time in the works, they needed one really bad and, and we got it pulled off for them, so we got them a new truck. And, uh, we got Stuttgart, they run my twenty-yard rear loads and my automateds. Uh, West Memphis runs my rear loads and my automateds and my front loads. And then, uh, St. Francis County runs my front loads and automateds also. Um, Forest City runs my front loads, um. I got Parkin, they run, uh, my automated, uh, Earl run an automated. So like I've got you surrounded everywhere, you know, I've, I've got trucks everywhere. West Memphis had probably the most in the area, I think they've got about six or seven.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yes, sir.
When you deliver the trucks, do you have someone that's going to show our people how, how, how these work?
Yes, I'll stay, I'll stay and train them as long as I think they need to. I kind of read, kind of read the room, kind of seeing if they're getting it or if there's something I maybe need to address more. And I'll take your opinions too. If there's something you want me to stress on them, I will. I mean, whether it's cleaning, maintaining, or whatever you want me to do, I'll help you.
What's usual maintenance, once a month, or once every week?
They need to be greased weekly.
Weekly.
Yes. We recommend that you wash them and clean them. Washing them keeps all that grime out of the cylinders and that stuff gets pulled in, you know, we're messing with nasty trash. You know, that's got the little squeegee deal on the cylinder that's supposed to drag that stuff off, but it don't get it all. And it will go back in there. So we might recommend doing, you know, regular filter changes and washing them, cleaning them, keeping that stuff out of there.
One of the most common, uh, problems with these trucks are the hydraulic systems. How do you rate your hydraulic systems in these trucks?
I really don't have a whole lot of problems. I really don't have a whole lot of problems out of the hydraulics on a rear load. You have more trouble out of an automated than you do a rear load because there's so many cylinders involved and so many moving parts. We don't have a lot of issues out of it.
And I think that's been part of the issue recently, that the automated trucks that we have had. Yeah, downtime is longer, costs more to fix it, so.
Yeah, so yeah.
Now, your, your bid is two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir. And that's including all your warranties. Truck price itself is, uh, two eleven nine, and then once you put all the warranties on there, um. Said it is, it is more money, but everybody knows maintenance bills. Everybody knows how expensive that is. This is one truck. You're not, at least you're not going to have to worry about that other than brakes and tires. That's basically all you're going to have to worry with.
And just for the council members, as it relates to one of the down trucks that we do have. Uh, we are basing the decision to either salvage it or sell it, and what the value is if we sell it is a hundred and three thousand approximately. Versus the salvage will be thirty-two hundred for parts. So something to consider as we think about, um, a truck in the future.
And also in, in future references, if. I have a lot of lease turn in trucks. If it's something y'all want to look into later with automated front loads, anything like that. I do have really good pricing on the buyback programs. They'll be completely refurbished and gone through. I know I'm putting the cart before the horse. I just kind of wanted to get it out there and let everybody know. There is some money saving stuff we can do if y'all get in a pension or needing a truck quick.
Could you, could you just describe the buyback program, uh, quickly? I did have a question. Like, what does that look like?
It's a, so what we do is we, we, we set it up on a percentage rate. So what we do is you'll get on the buyback program. It'll have, uh, full warranties while you're on the buyback program. And then we give you a s- a set amount with that truck being in the condition that we expected in the list that we give you. It'll have terms and conditions. Um, you'll have your, uh, we'll have our guys come over. They check them quarterly to make sure they're greasing them, they're maintaining them, they're keeping them up and all that. Um. So we kind of keep on. If they're neglecting it, we kind of stay on top of it. Uh, we can also do that with this truck also, the truck we're discussing today. If you want my guys to keep a close eye on it. I can send my guys over every quarter and come check it out. Make sure they're taking care of it and, you know, everything's being greased and maintained properly. Um, I can help you on that side too. I'd be, I'd be more than happy to. Because we're always doing evaluations up here in West Memphis and DeWitt and all this all around you, so.
Thank you.
But, oh, sorry. And then on that buyback program also, um, there'll be a balloon note at the end. And you can either choose to pay that balloon note or turn it in. I just need to know in advance that if you're going to keep it or let it go back.
Mr. Mayor, if we fi- if we purchase this type of truck, how will we handle financing?
So my suggestion, I, I think versus the la- and I wasn't here for the last meeting, but. I do think it's worth considering this truck, just considering maintenance cost and where our technicians are right now. And what I think we can do and probably should do is have that decision by November fourth. And so myself, the treasurer and Ms. Ramsey would talk about those options. And we'll make sure that that, that that puts us in a position where we're not straining ourselves at all.
Looking at this other bid, it's a woman, about thirteen thousand more.
Yeah.
For this other.
And that's going to be more maintenance. Yeah. For sure. Any, any other questions or discussion?
Questions. Sorry, I was going to bring one. I had a truck on the ground. I was going to bring y'all to look at tonight and they come picked it up at lunch today. So unfortunately, I wasn't, I was going to bring one. You put your eyes on it, park it out front, you look around, check it out. I like doing that when possible, but. The, the twinkie to that truck left, so.
And this is a, a, a twenty yard?
Yes, sir.
Uh, twenty yard.
Yes. It'll be a single axle, so you won't have that extra set axles and extra set of tires dragging around your city streets. And it's easier on your city streets also. You know, a lot of people have problems with the roads and. And repairing them and the money to repair them. That single axle is going to save, save a lot of wear and tear on, lighter. It's going to save that wear and tear on the streets. So.
No more questions.
So we can table this until November fourth? We want to table this until November fourth and, and clerk, the treasurer and I will get together and discuss, uh, best payment options. Yeah. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard about the Cobra.
All right, moving on to our next order of business. Uh, we have for the fourth point, list of equipment proposed for sale. The sanitation shop has a list immediately, and we actually skipped this. This is page five. So if you just go back one page, you'll see a list of equipment that the sanitation and street department are requesting permission to sell. And includes a bunch of old equipment that has been stationary, is no longer working. Or will provide value for other new equipment. And they're not asking to sell it yet, but we, they are trying to get, um, bids and quotes on it to see. What the, what the value of it would be. It's also worth noting as you look at that list, without going to, without getting into a new motion, just that. There, there was a company that the landfill used, Witcher, Witcher Auctions, and they were able to successfully sell about. And they were able to successfully sell about fifty thousand dollars worth of, um, old equipment that they, they're also using for new purchase equipment. So.
I would need to authorize the sanitation department to bid at this equipment for sale.
I'll second that. Any discussion before we vote in discussion? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Vassina?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Five yes?
That's the answer, yeah. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Moving on to the next order of business, we have a bid review for the West Street Drainage Project. This is something that I was briefed on less than a week ago that I do think is pretty urgent. We don't. And being that we're just looking at the bids today, I do think this is potentially something that could be tabled to November fourth. It's the packet. Te- titled Central Arkansas Contractors. You'll find two bids in there. This particular drain sees, well, it needs maintenance. And because of the lack of maintenance, the neighborhood sees a lot of flooding. It sees. Uh, pretty uncomfortable and unnecessary water, water heights through their streets when, when it get heavy rains, so. I do also believe as you look through these bids, it's worth noting that. For one in particular, our lower bid, this is a, this is an individual that we have an active. Lawsuit with. We're being sued by this particular individual. And I do think that's worth noting when it comes to potentially bidding out this project to, to them.
As a practical matter, the question for the council is simply, uh, the authorization of the amount. Uh, both will be above the mayor's spending limit and the bid, uh, limit. Uh, but he's already received the bids. The mayor has a, has exclusive right to accept or reject an individual, to reject all these and get others if he so chooses. Uh, so at this point, it's, it's a question of appropriation, not a question of necessarily approval. Uh, to further, uh, illuminate the issue. The, um, the structures that's there on, on, on West Street, the Meadow Brook subdivision, the streets flooded, et cetera. They've twice done remediation and now they're doing remediation also. But with, with remediation that they're doing, until the city fixed the drainage on West Street, uh, is for naught. So the city needs to go ahead and get the, the drainage on West Street done to properly allow the drainage to take effect. Because they're doing one side of the street, but it still has to drain on the other side of the street. I see another question.
We, we did. Um, M- M- Ms. Davis, I presented you photos from the Meadow Brook subdivision. And asked you to allow us to bid this out. This was a project that was started under Mayor Franklin. And they, and the city had agreed to, to do the other side of it and you authorized the bidding of the project. I told you I would bring it back to you to let you know what the cost would be. Uh, the bid open deadline was, um. I guess a couple of weeks ago, and so, uh, Mayor Whitfield got the bids, opened the bids. He has the two. And so this is the re-presentation of it to you. At, at this point, he'll have to, he'll make the decision as to whether he wants to accept either one of them. You would have to approve the expense and he may seek additional bids on his own after. So, but that's kind of where we are. I guess it's really status on.
Yeah. I do want it to be said that I, I, I likely will pursue new bids, just, I would likely will pursue new bids. Being that one of the bidders has an active lawsuit with us, so. Going on to our next order of business is a work truck request from the landfill operations. This would be the last four pages of the packet, not the bidding, but the original pack that we passed out, the last four pages. On those pages, you will see a picture of a service truck. The issue is that some of our landfill, one of our landfill employees has had to use his personal. Truck to drive around the landfill, so they are requesting authorization of funds to purchase this new truck. They are actually in a really good situation, being that they brought in Witcher Auctions to sell a bunch of their old equipment. That equipment sold for fifty thousand dollars is what they sold it for. They already purchased a new Liche truck for nineteen thousand dollars, which was much lower than their original Liche truck that they. Um, that they looked at. So that leaves them with about thirty-one thousand dollars and they're currently trying to use. They might not need the entire thirty-one thousand, but they are asking that we authorize it so that they can get a new service truck. Similar to the one that you see in the photos. Any questions or discussion about the need for, for a new service truck for the landfill?
They definitely got to have it up there.
Do we have them?
And, and, and to the extent, uh, uh, then what he's asking for is authorization for them because they moved fast.
Yeah.
They, they had one last week and they lost it because it went so fast. Just to authorize them to use the remainder of the funds they have. If they come across a truck to, to purchase it, and then we can affirm that purchase here at the table after it happens. So to the extent that the, the mayor's requesting authorization, I would make a motion that they, he be authorized to allow them to make the purchase.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vassina?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we have an, another new business, a new piece of new business as well. Um, the use of contracted garbage trucks. As we know, our garbage trucks have been unstable. And so we have been renting, for, we have been renting a, a, a second truck throughout the week. This particular, or this upcoming week, the street and sanitation department has requested a six day. Which would simply mean that there would be a second truck for, for one of those days next week to keep up with the pace. To keep up with the demand for trash pickup. The total for that rental fee would be right at four thousand five hundred dollars. Is what we will be paying for the six day usage of those two rental trucks total.
Okay, so you need our approval of that?
Yes. There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Mr. Vassina?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And we have one final business, uh, for Ms. Um. Ms. Mills, are you, do you have the grant signature? So Ms. Mills is coming up to. Discuss, um, an opportunity or a resolution to also, similar to the first motion, make me a signer on. All existing grants that we have as an authorizer for any grant applications that are currently out there.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon to everyone. This is a request from ANRC. Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, and this has. It's already been signed before under Mayor Franklin and again under the mayor Pro Tem. Um, Mr. Etherly. So what ANRC is requesting is that now that we have. Um, Mayor Whitfield, that this resolution be re-signed. And what it is, 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 as he said, it is simply authorizing him to enter into. Um, the contract with ANRC to oversee and execute the water business as, as it comes through. So what we have here is a resolution for a single signatory authority. And if it's okay, I'll read it. It's a resolution designating and authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered. By the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Whereas the city of Helena, West Helena, Arkansas owns and operates public waterwork system. Helena Water System number four nineteen and West Helena Water System number four sixteen. In order to provide stable, clean and safe water service to meet the needs of the city of Helena, West Helena. And its residents. Whereas the city council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city of Helena, West Helena. And its residents to apply for assistance from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Hereafter known as ANRC, in order to make certain improvements to the system, repair, rehabilitate. And stabilize both water systems, that's Helena and West Helena Water Systems. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Helena, West Helena, Arkansas, under section one. That the mayor of city of Helena, West Helena, as a signatory agent or the successor. Of said agent is hereby authorized and directed to make application for assistance administered. By the Arkansas Natural Resources ANRC. And to execute when approved by the city council, a bond purchase agreement. And instruments issued or made pursuant thereto on behalf of the city from time to time. Under section two, it reads that the manager or the mayor of the city of Helena, West Helena. As a signatory agent or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized. To execute for and on behalf of the city of Helena, West Helena. All documents and certificates as required. So again, this is a signatory authority being requested by ANRC. It has already been authorized by the council, but again, this needs to be done now under Mayor Whitfield.
What, what number is that resolution?
Twelve.
Who do they have, resolution twelve?
I'll say. Madam Clerk?
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Vassina?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening and bef- before, and before I say any comments. Uh, I'll, I'll open up the floor if anybody has anything that they would like to introduce before we adjourn.
Mr. Bailey, um, the city attorney thought we might need to address that lawsuit that you mentioned. Uh, which would have been the CAC lawsuit. Um, the need to hire, uh, council and getting approval. For a certain amount to, to, to accomplish that.
Right, once Etherly and I have been discussing, when he was, uh, the interim mayor. Uh, the issue that central Arkansas contractors saw in the city. Uh, the issue that Central Arkansas Contractors suing the city is something totally unrelated. I represented Central Arkansas Contractors, I filed lawsuit on their behalf against someone else last year. Um, so they've sued the city and the case is moving rapidly. And so I can't both be representing him and defending against him. This is, this is a appearance of impropriety. And so I filed all types of documents in the case a little while trying to hold off, but they're constantly filing things trying to get the case. Central Arkansas Contractors is suing the city for two hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars in the lit's, uh, expenditures as a claim against the city, uh, and so the city needs to defend it. Uh, and when the, must Anthony was mayor pro, he is mayor pro tem, but when he was the interim mayor, and we were discussing, and he was discussing with other attorneys, it's gonna be above the five thousand dollars that the mayor could spend. It's gonna be above said, well, it's not, it's professional services, so the bidding requirement wouldn't count. But it's gonna take some time and a lot of energy to defend the lawsuit because they're constantly filing things. And, uh, people, I go up, any attorney won't get involved, go and know if they're gonna get paid, so, uh, there lies the issue. So must definitely contact two or three attorneys when he was interim mayor. And we've had those discussions, but we need some type of appropriation just to get started. Uh, because we did file, so we did, uh, we objected to, they've, they've started discovery. They've done motions for, uh, they've done, uh, interrogatories, requests for deductions, they've done requests for admissions. And we filed a motion for a certain time and denied all those things, but in good faith, they need to sit at the ass room as quickly as possible. And this weekend, I got some notices of depositions. They wanna take the former mayor's deposition, they wanna take Ms. Ramsey's deposition, they wanna take, uh, uh, Jay and Riley's deposition. And so they're, they're trying to move faster, and they're trying to do that by November the third. And so, uh, we need an attorney, uh, and that's, that's where we are. But the matter I've represented Central Arkansas Contracts on is totally unrelated to anything with city. Before, the, the relationship with the city was broken, and, but the case is still pending. So I just wanna be open and must definitely can further explain that the conflict interest force lawyers, uh, the, I can't both represent and manage to defend at the same time.
It speaks for itself.
Yes.
When you say Ms. Messina?
I was saying, we need to come up with a
Yeah.
with an attorney.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, greater, uh, a, uh, appropriation for the mayor to hire one on that specific issue.
I, I, I had contacted an attorney, uh, prior to Mayor Whitfield's appointment, and I was quoted a fee. Uh, but, uh, uh, he will make that determination. He may not want the attorney that I talked to. But, uh, certainly, the one that I talked to was out of Plaski County, but it's gonna, it's gonna be above the spending then to retain any attorney in this matter, so. I think the issue is that the process is moving, and the longer it takes, the more pressure, uh, their attorney is putting on Mr. Bailey. And so, um, and he can, by, by rule, rules of professional conduct prohibit him from participating in this matter. So we have to hire somebody.
My question is, can a attorney from Phillips County do the same thing that you, that you, uh, quoted someone?
It can be an attorney anywhere who doesn't have a conflict. I mean, it can be from Phillips County. The one I talked to was in Plaski County. I, I, I searched Plaski County just as a lawyer. I know it'll ch- cost more for a lawyer to go from here to there, so I was trying to find someone who wouldn't have travel costs, and I.
But he filed.
Yeah, he filed.
He filed in Plaski County.
I left it out. He filed in Plaski County because his business is located in Plaski County. And so he could either suit in Plaski County or Phillips County. He chose to file in Plaski County where he and his attorney is. He's represented by attorney Luther Suda, uh, but they filed in Plaski County.
So would appropriation buy that?
I, I don't, I don't think so.
Is that information around the, the number sensitive information?
Anytime you tell somebody what somebody else is charging, then they listen and they want the same thing that the other person was charging. And so I, I, I've always been hesitant to just start calling out what this person said they were charged this much, because then everybody. Um, I, I would, I was, I would suggest that you, you put ten thousand on your radar. And that may be sufficient for the entire matter, but it might not be sufficient for the entire. You just don't know at this point. But I would, I would suggest you give him the authority at least for ten thousand. He, he, here's the bottom line. Everybody I talked to, they know who they're dealing with on the other side, and they know it's gonna be a lot of work. And so they priced that in, and that's why I removed Phillips County. I didn't call anybody in Phillips County, because like, they gotta drive two hours every time they have a hearing. And so we ended up paying for the, the hourly fees plus travel and all of that, so. I was trying to strategically select someone who, who wouldn't be from here because they wouldn't have the billing for travel, so.
There's no problem. Your business produces so much here, so one here may be willing to handle it. But you're limited also by the virtue of several of those lawyers suing the city. Yeah. That's Phillips County. Cause that's, that's one of the other things we have is, you, you, your pool is limited by the number of people that sue in the city, uh.
But, but it's a, it's a personal service, so it'll be whomever Mayor Whitfield feels comfortable with. Yeah. I said, person? Professional service.
Say, we need to give the mayor ten thousand dollars?
That's what I would do.
Okay.
Based on my communication, that's what I would do.
There, any more discussion before a motion?
Up to, yeah. I'll make that a motion, and we approve up to ten thousand dollars for Mayor Whitfield to retain an attorney to represent us in the, uh, the matter where we're being sued by Central Arkansas Contractors in Plaski County.
I second it. Let's give him the authority up to ten by October.
Yes, yes, sir.
To find a lawyer.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I do just wanna say that, um, in my first city council meeting, I am excited to be here. And I think that this is, um, the last ten days been encouraging to see where the city can go. And I think that we, we can start building something positive, and so, uh, thank you all for being here, and, um, we have a good tour journey. Right, hold on, there a second? Lord meeting.